All right, I wish to call to order this meeting of the work session from Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is April 10th, 2024, and I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present in the NatU Hill Room. So, it looks like we have something from E. Sensensteine?
Actually, Molly, I believe is going to handle this.
Okay.
Molly, you're where?
Ms. Turner-King, are you handling this ordinance 2024-18, amendment to the...
Election Administration.
Yes, I am. So, this is a... The proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 287 to add two categories of election workers to that code section. Pursuant to IC Code 311.572, the Commissioners set the per diem for absentee counters and couriers. Based on job descriptions provided by the Clerk's Office, the absentee counter is responsible for processing all ballots received by mail, in person, or otherwise not on Election Day, which includes verifying the signatures on the applicants and the ballots before they're opened. And the courier is responsible for transporting any needed material to poll sites from Election Central. Both of these election workers work on Election Day. I think they're required to report beginning at 5:00 a.m., and then they remain until their Election Day duties are satisfied. The amendment provides for a per diem rate for both of these individuals as... or both of these categories of election workers, as well as a trading rate. The per diem for the absentee counters is the amount currently reflected in the salary ordinance, so it's not to exceed 135. 135 is what's currently in the salary ordinance. The per diem for the couriers is based on documentation provided by the Clerk, so it's not to exceed $150. Similar to Section 8 in Chapter 287, the proposed amendment sets a not-to-exceed amount, and then the Election Board would set a specific amount within that range.
So, that was pretty fast. So, I... Do you have questions or comments?
No, go ahead.
Well, I wondered why the absentee ballot counters start at 5:00 a.m. I can understand why the couriers might, but why do the absentee counter...
And I don't think I can answer that question. I think our election supervisor is here, and she might be able to answer that.
Good morning, Kaylee.
Good morning. So, with the counters, they have to arrive at 5:00 a.m. so that they can get their oath and then go through any training that they have to go through before they can begin the process of opening the ballots and processing everything and getting it ready to go back to the back to be scanned. We start opening the ballots exactly at 6:01 a.m., and so they have that hour to get everything in, make sure that they're set up, everything's ready to go as soon as 6:01 hits, and then they also have to go through their oath before the process can begin as well.
So, the training occurs that day?
Yes, it occurs that morning, which it's not an intense training for that one. It's mainly just getting them through the process of teaching them how they have to do everything and the order that it needs to be done and for it to go back into the back to be scanned.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
That's a very long day for people, isn't it?
It is.
So, Ms. Turner-King, has this been... Ordinance 2024-18, has this been vetted, reviewed, approved, whatever, by the Election Board?
It has not been. It was on the agenda at the last Election Board meeting, and the item was tabled. I think it was tabled in part because I think the Clerk's Office will have recommendations on further amendments to that section, and so we were trying to efficiently just have them review at once. I'm not speaking to the other amendments, because statutorily, this is the only amendment that I need to really make to the ordinance or propose to the ordinance. I think our election supervisor is here to speak toward Section A, which deals with other election workers, such as the inspector, the judges, the clerks, the sheriffs, and those election workers.
So, on that, I had sent it over to Molly and Angie and was hoping that it would be forward, forward, forward on to you guys, which I believe it was. And so, on that, we have had multiple poll workers that have called us and have stated with the raise on the absentee side, it's not leading to the same for the Election Day workers. We have had a few that have already said that if it is not raised, at least some, they will not be working this election because of the fact that they are working 13, 14-hour days during the day. And they also have to come the day before to set up, and they have to come the Saturday before the election to pick up all of their materials, and that is all by state guidelines of how we have to hand out all the materials and the way that everything has to be set up. On the chart that I had sent in for you guys to review, on the inspectors, they are currently making 165 for the day, which brings you about $10 an hour for them, if you are doing it by the math. But since they are per diem, we wanted to give you guys some suggestions, and this is coming from our clerk. We're looking for the inspectors to go from 165 to the 200 for the day. Judges, 135 to the 175 for a day. Clerks and student poll workers would be going from 135 to 150. Sheriffs, 115 to 120. And then our counters would be 135 to 175. Our couriers would be 17... $17 an hour, which that would actually be the per diem. We thought they were going to be within that absentee, so they would be also the 135 plus the... Sorry, the 150 plus the mileage for them.
And is... You're not paying people at the maximum of the range at this point?
Correct. That's why we wanted to wait until after this meeting to see about potentially getting the increase to that 200 and then making the changes.
But what I'm asking is, why aren't they already paid at the maximum of the current range?
On that, it would be more of the clerk that would know more on that end, since she's the one that sets what each one of them pay. I don't know fully on that, so...
Okay. I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I would have thought that it was the Election Board that set some of that.
I didn't know that they come together to agree on it. A point of clarity is the code section 287 does say that the Election Board will set within the range.
Okay. And has County Council heard this?
The Council hasn't heard the proposal to these election workers. Statutorily, the Council sets the per diem for the absentee workers. I think logically, what the code section does is that any election worker that works the day of is set by the Commissioners. Their per diem is set by the Commissioners, and the Council sets the per diem for individuals who work multiple days prior to the election. So, the Council did just adjust the rates for the individuals who work prior to election, but they have not heard this proposal.
And what are they paying the current absentee workers? Or the current early voting workers, I guess?
Yeah, so the absentee board would consist of early voters, travel board, and individuals who work in like a satellite office, which is the Clerk's Office. So, those individuals have already been set by the Council, and they increased... What they did was they created a resolution that created three categories of absentee workers, a category A, B, and C, and then there are staggered rates with $33.20, and I forget what the third one is, 25. So, in essence, the absentee leads are making $33 an hour, clerks are making 25, and travel board is making 20. Clerks make 20, and travel board makes 25 plus mileage.
Sorry, I'm trying to quickly do math in my head as well, but the supervisors right now don't work like a 16-hour day almost.
Well, current timesheets are reflecting that the supervisors are working approximately anywhere between two and six hours.
So, we're being asked to increase without a recommendation from the Election Board?
The Election Board has not made a recommendation on the per diems yet, correct? And I'm happy to ask the Election Board to call a special session to do so. Their next meeting isn't until the first... I think it's actually April 30th. It's usually the first Thursday of the month, but I think it's April 30th this next one is. But I can ask them to call a special session.
Should we table it?
I would just remind you that since our ordinance and our code requires the Election Board to change the rate, and they're not at the top of the rate right now, I would recommend that we actually consider they would have a special meeting no matter what, since they're not paid at the top of the rate right now. Even if you made the change, would it... Would they... Does the Election Board feel that it needs to be moved up? Those are questions that only the Election Board can answer, and so my suggestion would be have the Election Board meet early, give you a recommendation on what they think it should be, and then what they're willing to do, right? And let them kind of guide you through this election issue, which is kind of their role.
So, that would... We would be asking them to have a special session, make a recommendation to us, and then we would vote on it, but that needs to occur pretty quickly because this is a time-sensitive issue.
I can call the members of the Election Board today, see when they can meet, and try to get a meeting before the next Commissioners' meeting.
And I would suggest that if they're not meeting till the end of April anyway, their recruitment and getting these people online will be hindered if this issue is not resolved until then, and they have to be part of a resolution.
So, I would ask that we... Since we don't have a motion on the floor yet, can we just ask that this be brought back to us after the Election Board has made a decision or made a recommendation, I guess it is?
I can talk to the Election Board and then place it back on a regular session for the Commissioners.
That's how I would like to have it handled.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yeah, okay. I just don't want to do anything that's counter to their wishes at this point. Yes, please.
Hey, Kaylee, I just want some clarification, sorry.
You're fine.
The information on these sheets, is this what you want it to be?
Yes, so this is the one that we had sent to the County Council as well when we were taking care of the absentee. So, they have seen these numbers, they know what they look like, and then we brought them as well today for you guys to review.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
Thank you.
I can be. I think this is a Jeff and Molly tag team item. Or... Yes.
So, this is an amendment to personnel policy to create flex time policy for the exempt employees?
Correct.
Please go through and explain this.
So, the proposal is to add a benefit time to the personnel policy that would be a benefit to individuals who are classified as exempt employees. In essence, what it would allow is if an exempt employee works beyond their required hours for a week, they would be able to bank time to be used later. So, for example, I'm an 80-hour employee. If in the two-week period I worked 90 hours, I would put 10 hours in a flex time bank, and then I could use that 10 hours elsewhere. Currently, what usually happens is that exempt employees have to flex within the pay period, and this would allow them to flex outside the pay period that they earned it in. The policy says that each year on April 1st, an exempt employee's flex time bank will reset, so there is somewhat of a time limit for them to use them, so they're not just holding on to them forever. It would also require that flex time be approved... The use of flex time be approved by the elected official or department head in the same manner as any other benefit time. And I think that unless you have something further to add, Mr. Cockrell...
And maybe just a little background on to why this was thought up is that, you know, we had, and I don't want to point fingers, but we had a jail commander who came in, put a ton of time in, and there was some concern about him getting burned out. And it's... I mean, from my perspective, this is nice, but it'll never affect me because I have enough time buildup that this is just another bank of time that I'm going to have left over when I leave here that I'm not going to get paid for, right? That's all this. But it's really more designed for kind of newly... New people who are in exempt positions, who come to work here as they are getting their feet settled and as they're... You know, there's a lot of front-loaded work, particularly with the new elected official and new administrations, to get kind of everybody up to speed, and so this is kind of there to help provide them a little bit of time that they can take off, even though they can't necessarily do it in the two-week time period. That's kind of the... That's kind of what got this conversation started, and I think we've got prosecutors and public defenders who also have maybe not that concern, but the, hey, we've got a big trial coming up, and I'm spending a lot of time preparing for the trial, and then we get through the trial, and then I need a few days to decompress. Well, but that's maybe not within that two-week period. So, it's kind of those kind of situations that's really what drove this, particularly when we have new elected officials come on, and we saw the type of energy and effort they were putting into, you know, making cultural changes within their departments and, you know, and then worried about them, hey, they can't keep going like this forever. They're really going to need some time to work it off, and we don't give them vacation for six months, so it's... That's kind of the... Why this idea started.
And I just want to add to that, too, that there are some exempt employees. Again, I'm like Jeff, I've been here forever. I will not need this, but we have some that are much younger, had less time here, and they have to put in time. Maybe they're short-staffed, maybe there's trainings, you know, they're having to do things that they don't get compensated for. I mean, it's just kind of part of our, you know, what you're considered to be doing. But we also don't allow people, the flexibility that are exempt employees, to take that time at a later point in time. Right now, they have to do it within that two-week period, and a lot of times, it's too late to make any flex time at that point. And we have run this past the Board of Judges and the prosecutor, and I believe that what we're wanting to do today is to have this approved officially today as a policy amendment in our personnel policy, and I believe that might also be why Chief Deputy Parker is present, because he has staff that are, as Mr. Cockrell noted, who are extremely impacted by something like this.
And I would just note that we would then bring it back next week in kind of our formal form that says, here's the chapter, here's the section numbers and all that, so that we would have that documentation.
So, do you want a motion today?
I think that the... I think that we have had a lot of conversations, and I think that would be appropriate to give an indication, yes, we're going to approve this, and then we'll bring the formal document to you next week.
And I would also note that, just to add a bit more detail on the policy, unlike comp time, this is not a benefit time that gets paid out if the employee leaves. So, if someone leaves, you know, before they have to... They can use their flex time, it's not going to have a financial impact, and this builds on the premises that exempt employees are paid for their services or expertise rather than an hourly rate, which is why flexing outside of a pay period is beneficial. And I do think it benefits a lot of, like, specifically the attorneys, because I will say, I've been the prosecutor, you know, who's done a jury trial in your second week of the pay period, and you put in all these hours, and then at the end, you can't... There's no time to flex. So, it provides a benefit in those scenarios.
I'm very agreeable to this, so I'd like to move that we amend personnel policy to create a flex time policy for exempt employees.
Second.
Do you wish to speak on this, Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Or Chief Parker, sorry.
Just a real quick, basically saying the same thing that Jeff and Molly have said, and they've really listened to this and helped us with this. And it's exactly as everybody is saying that, you know, when you come in there, and we've seen the effort that's been put there, and it came up particularly with our three captains that as we're trying to change culture over there, part of that was training, and we have to... So, we have to do their jobs, and they have to come to the training, and if you're not able to... If you're not able to take that outside of pay period, it's just gone. And it... I just wanted to come and thank the Commissioners personally, and I know Commissioner Thomas didn't hear, so I'm making sure we're thanking her, too, to consider this because if you just keep go, 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 and there's no break in that, and I'm not trying to... Instead of trying to sound pitiful and whiny here, but if you don't have some time to de-escalate yourself, it's pretty hard to go through your day there and knowing that this isn't laying out there as a way for you to kind of escape from that. So, I appreciate you very, very much considering it, and I really appreciate the work that, you know, I first brought this to Angie and then Jeff and Molly have kind of picked up on it. So, I want you to know that from the jail there, there's a lot of appreciation coming to the Commissioners for this.
Well, there's certainly been a turnaround in what's going on in the jail, too, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public discussion comments? If not, I'll call for a vote on the amendment to personnel policy to create flex time policy for exempt employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item, we have something from Ms. Ridge. Get down to page 10.
I was getting ready to say good morning, but good afternoon now.
Oh, well.
So, earlier in the regular meeting, you agreed to a contract or an agreement with NDOT concerning Ord Road being an unofficial detour route for the road closing. We wanted to improve Ord Road before that May 1st commences, just making it better for the public that do choose to take that unofficial route. So, we opened bids... Quotes, actually. We opened quotes on April 5th. We received a quote from EMB Paving. We had sent out actually four... We sent the quote packets to four individual companies. We only received two, and then one letter from a contractor that was not going to submit. So, I'm asking for EMB to be awarded. They were the lowest-received quote. They would like to begin the project next week, so I was seeing if we could get this approved and then ratify it on next week's meeting. And then if you want any information about the community crossing information after that or during?
Let's do that after, if that's okay. Get this taken care of. Can I... Can we go ahead and make a motion?
I would just say, I don't think this needs to come back for ratification. This is an emergency. It's a project that we've already discussed today at an earlier meeting. I think if you guys just wanted to go ahead and approve it and not have it come back for ratification, that'd be perfectly fine.
That would be great, and if I could get a signed copy today, and that would be give them officially for them to be able to start Monday.
Okay, well, I move that we award paving project to EMB Paving LLC for paving on Ord Road. This is fund name Motor Vehicle Highway, fund number 1176, and the amount of $116,572.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. With the quarry being right there and all those huge trucks use Ord Road all the time, are they going to be rerouted, or will they still be able to use Ord Road?
They should still be able to come out. The paving is from the quarry entrance west to Vernal Pike.
Okay.
So, they will still be able to come out the quarry and go straight out to 48.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other... Is there any public discussion of this item? Seeing none, I call for a vote on the award... Paving Project, EMB Paving LLC for Ord Road as described by Ms. Ridge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. So, it sounds like we're good. Is there anything else for today's work session? Oh, you were going to talk about the community crossings.
So, I know paving is a huge interest in the county, as it is for all of us. We submitted our community crossing application in January. The Council actually put into their budget the match, which is... They increased it to a $3 million worth of projects, a $1.5 million match locally, and then the award would be 1.5 million. It was announced this morning at 10:00 a.m. that Monroe County did receive... That application was approved and accepted for the award of the full 1.5 million. We have kind of stayed ahead of this, so we did not delay paving. So, we actually opened bids two weeks ago. We did not award anything. Everything was subject to the community crossing awards. We've worked with NDOT on this, and they suggest that so you don't lose that month or two of getting bids ready, getting them out, getting roads prepared. So, we did that. We've been holding on to them, so I'll be bringing that to you along with the NDOT contract. I just wanted to let you know, the roads that are included into that is about 26 miles of road, and I want to also stress that we could not do these applications without the Council assistance. They've helped us. This is the second year in a row. Our paving budget and our MBH is just approximately 1.4 million, so as you can see, that's our match. If we don't have the Council assistance, we will not be able to apply for these grants in the future. So, I really want to, you know, work with the Commissioners and the Council on how we move forward for 2025 with our paving program. We want it... We've had... This will be the second year that we've done really well, made a difference in the county, but it can go backwards just like that if we don't keep up pace. And I do consider it a huge public safety issue. If we can't take care of our roads and use funds that way, then it is a problem. So, anyway, Mount Pleasant Road, Monroe Dam Road, Valley Mission Road, Sewell Road, Rockport Road, Brummitts Creek Road, Ramp Creek Road, Popcorn Road, Vernal Pike, Chambers Pike, Zikes Road, Woodland Road, Oak Ridge Road, and the entire subdivision of Shelburne Woods, and that equals 26 miles of roadway, about $3 million worth of projects.
Wow. Yeah. Having driven on a few of those roads not that long ago, I'm glad that they're...
Yeah, and we prioritize, and we also hear from the public. We investigate those roads, and, you know, I know you guys receive a lot of emails from requests. If we try and stay a year in advance, depends on how the weather... The winter weather affects our roads, but if we throw in one road, then another road gets thrown out. So, it's a really tough call to make, and it just definitely can't make everybody happy, and we don't have enough funds to take care of the 700 miles of roadway that we have.
And you've been able to get the maximum on these community matching grants for several years now, and I would urge the Council to continue to provide that matching money, not just because of safety, but, you know, I go to the meetings of the Bloomington Chamber, the Eldsville Chamber, and for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, and these are things that are really important if we want to both attract and maintain current employers. This is part of the quality of life also for residences, and I fully, fully support any kind of effort on the part of the Council to provide this funding.
And we do reach out to all sources that we have. We utilize every budget, and we are required to do so to show that we are using every fund that we have available. We've even reached out to the RDC for road reconstruction funding assistance on some of the roads that are listed or within their TIF, when you have a four-lane road like Curry Pike. So, we are reaching out to every avenue that we have, so if anybody has good ideas, we are so open to listen to them.
I'll just agree with everything that you just said.
Well, I don't think we want to be holding bake sales to be...
No, no. That would not pave many roads.
No, no. So, I do appreciate all of your hard work on these things. People don't understand that you are out there. You go and look at these things. You do a... No, no. So I do appreciate all of your hard work on these things. People don't understand that you are out there. You go and look at these things. You do assessments and...
I do. I try and stay involved, and I can't say this enough, I can't do it without everybody that works in the highway department, from our administrative staff to our superintendents, our assistants, our bridge crew, our stormwater. We all come together, we get these roads ready. So it is definitely a huge team effort, and I'm very appreciative of everybody, commissioners, council. But again, we can only do so much within our department, and we definitely need the assistance.
Very good. Okay, now, is there anything else for the agenda? If not, we will adjourn this work session. We will be back next week on April the 17th. Thank you, everyone.